Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Jeff Huff.
Here.
Craig Connell.
Here.
John DeGran.
Present.
Terry Atwell.
Here.
Donna Getzmann.
Present.
Bob Paulson.
Here.
And Roger Spears.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. I will go ahead and proceed with the hybrid statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless a chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, presenters, and staff, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna get to the first order of business, and tonight that is election of officers. So if we're gonna go ahead and take care of that first, what we'd need to do is have somebody make a recommendation, and then we can vote on that. We need a chair and a vice chair. So we'll start with the chair.
Terry Atwell, I nominate Jeff again as chair.
Craig Connell, I second that.
All right. Can we take a vote?
Jeff Huff, I guess you could say, yes. Craig Connell.
Yes.
John DeGran.
Aye.
Terry Atwell.
Yes.
Donna Getzmann.
Yes.
Bob Paulson.
Yes.
And Roger Spears.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Now, vice chair.
It's Roger Spears. I would nominate Craig Connell as the vice chair.
John DeGran, I'll second that.
All right. Vote, please.
Yes. Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
John DeGran.
Aye.
Terry Atwell.
Yes.
Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Yes.
And Roger Spears.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Next item is the agenda items. The add, delete, revise, or approve the agenda. I would like to make a revision. Whenever we get down to the business before the board, we will do item B, and then go to A, and then to C. Do we have any other disclosure of conflicts of interest, or disclose of our external contacts or discussions?
None.
Appears to be none. All right. And then we will need a approval of the minutes.
Bob Paulson, I move we approve the last meeting's minutes.
Craig Connell, I second that.
Okay. Can we do a voice vote, or do we need to... Let's go ahead and do a full vote.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
John DeGran.
Aye.
Terry Atwell.
Aye.
Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Roger Spears.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. Next item of business, the board reports, the Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. We're Board of County Commissioners' actions. June meeting for the zoning board, you had two applications you considered. There was a preliminary and final plat for Edgewater Estates and a accessory building use permit for 25251 West 131st Street. Both of those applications were recommended for approval by this board, and on July 25th, the Board of County Commissioners approved those applications. That's it for Board of County Commissioners. If you'd like, I can provide an update for the planning commission. The planning commission meeting, last meeting, was on August 27th. At that time, there was staff from our county's Health and Environment Department that presented a solid waste management plan update. That plan was recommended for approval and acceptance by county staff for compliance with our rural comprehensive plan. And then that was forwarded on to the Board of County Commissioners, who did adopt that plan update earlier this month. In addition, at the planning commission meeting, there was a survey that was conducted of the planning commissioners. Staff received some responses. And Zoe Brown here with our planning staff did a good job of presenting some information on those possible future training topics for the planning commission, and we hope to begin that at the meeting in October. The only other update on planning commission is that there will not be a meeting next week, our regularly scheduled meeting on September 24th. That meeting is going to be canceled. We're gonna be sending out a notice on that tomorrow. That I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Now, let's proceed to the business before the board. Like I said earlier, we will go with the B first. Application number W24-404-PP and W24-405-FPLE, Preliminary and Final Plat Walnut Valley 30075 West 115. This applicant is requesting to continue the application, so we need a motion and approval to move that to the next meeting.
John DeGran, I move that we continue the application to the October meeting.
Terry Atwell, second.
And I believe we can do a voice vote on that. All approve, or all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Prove. That passes? All right.
And Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, the other item I will note for that, there were residents who showed up for that hearing tonight. We informed them of this continuance. We will also send out a courtesy letter to all property owners within 1,000 feet, notifying them of the next meeting date in October.
Okay. First, kind of standard procedure that we do. Okay.
It's not required, but as a courtesy, we want to let people know about that. This is the official continuance now that you're continuing it, but we'll let all property owners know so that they know when they can return and when it will be heard next month.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. So let's go back to the next order of business. A, application number W24-401CUPLE, conditional use permit 11499 County Line Road. Dan Hoover, applicant and landowner, requesting a conditional use permit renewal for a dog kennel on 34.91 acres on property zoned RUR rural agriculture uses and single-family dwelling in Section 14 Township 13 Range 21. Is there a presentation? And there is. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Zoe Brown, Planning Department. The application I have for you tonight is a conditional use permit renewal for a dog kennel. The original CUP was approved in 2010 for a public kennel for the boarding, training, and grooming of dogs and cats. The property is located on the border of Johnson and Douglas County, as you can see here on the vicinity map. The current zoning is rural, and the subject property is approximately 35 acres. Here's the aerial view of the property. On the site is the applicant's house and accessory structure for the kennel. The original CUP allowed the owner to board 40 dogs and 20 cats, in addition to 20 dogs for grooming. As a part of the renewal, the owner would like to board up to 60 dogs. The applicant cited that he rarely boards cats, so 60 animals total would be an appropriate change. The original CUP approved hours of operation were from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday, and the applicant would like to expand the hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM with this renewal. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a 30-year permit. Staff recommends 20 years in the report, but the applicant is here if you have questions about the longer-term request. Here's a site plan. There are no new structures proposed in the renewal application. The only change to the original site plan is that holding yards have been added to the south. Here's a photo of the kennel on the left and the holding yard on the right. The existing kennel is 3,300 square feet, and the kennel currently employs four part-time staff and four full-time staff. To staff's knowledge, the applicant has complied with the stipulations of the 2010 permit, except for number three, stipulation number three, which requires permits for signs on the property. As a stipulation for approval for this renewal, the applicant is required to obtain the necessary permits for the signs on the gate and on the kennel building. As far as infrastructure goes, water is provided by Rural Water District Number Four. The owner received an exception with the Department of Health and Environment, so the septic system can serve both the kennel and the residents on the property. As a commercial use, the owner is required to obtain an annual operation permit from DHE, and the applicant is up to date with those permits. Relating to roads, Public Works reviewed the application and stated no concerns. For a CUP, part of the staff's analysis is the golden criteria. So for criteria number one, staff finds that the size of the property and remote location of the kennel means the use is consistent with the zoning and uses of nearby properties. For criteria number two, compatibility with the neighborhood character. The surrounding area is agricultural with large tracts of land. The closest home is about 300 feet to the south of the kennel building, and with the recommended CUP stipulations, the kennel is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. For criteria number three, the subject property has rural zoning, which allows single-family residential and agricultural uses. A dog kennel is an allowed use in the RUR district with a CUP, and the proposed CUP is appropriate with the zoning and use of the property. The extent of detrimental effects to nearby parcels will be minimal. The closest property owner has submitted a letter in your packet stating that he supports the continued operation of the kennel. Criteria number five does not apply, as the subject property is not vacant. The existing house and accessory structure were built in 2002. Due to the remote location of the subject property, the size of the site, and there being only one house in the immediate area, there does not appear to be any gain to the public if the request for the kennel is denied. Last, the rural comprehensive plan indicates the subject property is within the boundaries of the rural policy area, and the proposed kennel use is consistent with the planned use for the area. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow the operation of a public boarding, training, and grooming kennel for dogs and cats, subject to the stipulations in the report. And here's the recommended motion. And the applicant is here for any questions as well.
Are there any questions from the board for staff?
John DeGran, there's been no... People come forward in the last 14 years to voice any kind of concern?
I believe there was one woman in, I think, 2017, but she's since moved from that house, and the current resident is the one who submitted the letter of support.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Just one comment. I don't know who the owner is, but I live about a mile away from this. Has the crow flies? I've never heard dogs. I've heard the neighbors to the west of me, but I've never heard dogs from this direction.
Dan, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah. And so the applicant wants to make your presentation? Yeah, just state your name and...
Dan Hoover, 11499 County Line Road, Udoora, Kansas. The only thing I have to add is the 30-year request, and based on our history and what we've done, and that we're in the most primitive part of Johnson County that we could be in. And like you said, you're a mile away, and you never hear the dogs. So I've been in this a long time, but if we do that, I know I'm not gonna have to worry about renewing this before I'm retired or dead. So that would be wonderful. And otherwise, we've had zero problems.
Any questions for the applicant from the board? No. We're good. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Are there any people, public comments? Anybody that is here for this? Does not look like there is. Okay.
One question. Bob Paulson. So since he brought it up, the 30 years, and we're... And staff has recommended 20. Reason for that necessarily?
Yeah. So 20 years is kind of just our standard planning timeline, I suppose. Updates for comprehensive plans, land use maps is usually about 20 years. So it's more just standard than anything.
Craig Connell. So a follow-up to that would be, so if down the road we have complaints, or, you know, heaven forbid, something bad happens, we can revoke this permit? I assume if we raise it up to the proper authorities, it can be revoked?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question. Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. That's a great question. Yes. All conditional use permits do have a revocation process at any time. If for whatever reason, a landowner is not complying with the stipulations of a conditional use permit, normally the process is, we don't immediately start a revocation process. That'd be kind of the last resort. The way we handle it, if we have any complaints, we notify the owner of any issues or complaints we've received from neighbors. They have an opportunity to remedy those problems and bring it into compliance. If they do not then respond and bring those into compliance, then we could initiate a revocation process that requires a public hearing, and that could be brought back at any time during the term. In addition to that, as Zoe mentioned, you know, the planning staff's typical recommendation on a renewal like this would be to logically go to the next stage. We had a 10-year CUP before. It may make sense to go to a 20-year CUP now. The board can recommend a longer or shorter term for a CUP as deemed appropriate. So it's certainly under your purview to consider that at the applicant's request, and the board could approve that a longer or shorter term.
Yeah. Terry Atwell. So you and I have been on the board the longest. So if we do decide we want to do a 30-year, we just have to specify why. And kind of what we've always done before is, it is costly, you know, to do these CUP renewal applications. So we'll just have to come up with the reasons why we feel it necessary to move it to the 30. But just so refresh my memory. If we do go with the 30, and let's say he sells, or heaven forbid, you know, is no longer here, if the property gets sold, the CUP stays with the property. So if somebody bought it, they would have to adhere to the same standards that we set here.
That is correct. CUP runs with the land. So if it's approved by the board, we got a resolution, that stays in effect for as long as there's a kennel. And actually, really, until such time as it's rescinded, regardless of owner. So yes, the property owner could sell this property to another owner. They could operate a kennel in the same fashion, complying with the CUP stipulations as approved. It will run with the land until such time as either it expires, or it's rescinded. You know, a new owner could just take out the kennel, say, I don't want to do this anymore, and repeal it. But yeah, that's right. It will remain for that term, whatever it is, for as long as the owner wishes.
And we're gonna recognize the applicant again.
Dan Hoover. Do I need to do my address again? Okay. Yeah. And that's one reason, too, because I have children that would take over the business if something happened, and that would be one thing they wouldn't have to be worrying about doing. And they would obviously abide by everything that I did. Then I know that it can be revoked, so that's why I thought that would be fine to do that. But it puts my mind at ease when I'm talking to my children about, you know, what could happen, and they've never been through this, so it'd be a whole learning curve for them. And it is expensive, and it's a lot of work. So... And since I've been there, like I said, 14 years, and it's been nearly flawless. And, you know, I've been doing it a long time, so I know how to run it. And that's why we don't have any problems. But yeah, all those things you're saying, they all make sense.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Well, it looks like there's no more public information, so at this time, we will close the public comments. And then we can discuss among the board here how we would like to proceed with this recommended motion. Does anybody have any ideas or thoughts on that?
Terry Atwell. I don't have an issue with expanding that time by an hour. I feel like the difference of an hour isn't gonna make or break somebody that would possibly have an issue with it. So I'm good with leaving it at the 7 to 7. And then, quite frankly, I'm all for moving it to the 30 years. I mean, he's got a great track record. His place looks immaculate. And we have mechanisms in place that if something did happen and complaints are made, we can address that, and if need be, shut it down. So I don't have a quandary over doing that. It's my thought.
Craig Connell, I echo your comments, Terry.
Okay. So do we need a motion to add that, too? Okay. So official motion?
You brought it up.
Yeah. And that suggests the motion as Zoe presented there. And if there were any changes, you would just note the changes to the stipulation and reason why. Yeah.
Okay.
Terry Atwell, I move to approve application number W24-401-CUPLE for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a public boarding, training, and grooming kennel for dogs and cats, subject to the stipulations in the report with altering the 20 years to 30 years, and the operating time from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
I have a second.
Roger Spears, second.
Go ahead.
All right.
Donna Getzmann, second.
All right. Let's take a vote.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
John DeGran. Terry Atwell.
Aye.
Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Roger Spears.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. And then the county commissioners' meeting date and location?
That'll be October 17th in this room.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. The next order of business is application number W24-406FDPGA, Financial Development Plan, New Century Commerce Center, Building G2. It's a Van Trust Real Estate Development LLC. Applicant and Johnson County landowner are requesting a final development plan for construction of an approximately 352,800 square feet warehouse building on 22.83 acres on property zone PEC-LP Planned Employment Center Logistics Park District in Section 17 Township 14 Range 23. If we could please have the presentation by the planning office.
Thank you. Good evening. Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. There is a handout at your desk for proposed new stipulations. So that's why that's there, and I'll talk about that later in my presentation. So for this case tonight, the applicant is Van Trust Real Estate Development on behalf of Johnson County Airport Commission. Landowner is Johnson County, and the location for this subject application is the New Development, New Century Commerce Center, that East Area Plan, which is generally at 159th Street and Clare Road. The zoning is that PEC-LP Logistics Park District zoning. The site area is approximately 22 acres in size for that Building G2 site. The applicant is requesting a final development plan for Building G2 to be in the New Century Commerce Center area. Three industrial warehouses have been constructed and occupied as part of the Phase 1 of that development, and that's Buildings A, B1, and B2. This proposed final development plan is for the fourth building, Building G2, and it'll be located in the vicinity of 165th Street and Flightline Drive. The building is approximately 353,632,000 square feet to be utilized for e-commerce distribution, indoor light manufacturing. The building will be 50 feet tall and be constructed of tilt-up concrete wall panels. Just to note that stormwater detention areas for the whole developments that were approved as part of that original PDP have remained in the same location. And the proposed final development shows landscaping around the subject property, which is also consistent with that approved preliminary development plan, as well as the same singles for the building elevations and design of the buildings. I'll just go over the graphics here real quick. This is just the vicinity map showing the area here around 165th Street and that new street that's been constructed, John Glenn Parkway. Here's an aerial view of the surrounding area, showing those existing buildings, A, B1, and B2, kind of up there in the corner. And then the red box is just showing where Building G2 will be going. Here's a plan just showing the overall development plan, showing the existing buildings, as well as some future buildings to the south. And then, of course, the location of Building G2. This is the final development plan and layout for Building G2, just showing the building and parking areas. And then this is two elevation drawings of showing what the building will look like, which again will be consistent with the existing buildings that are currently out there. So the minimum infrastructure requirements have also been reviewed for this building. So a new street, that Flightline Drive, and a new portion of 165th Street will be extended to provide access to this new building, and it will have three access points or driveways. There was a revised traffic memo that had been submitted, and it has been accepted by the Public Works staff. That revised traffic memo recommended no additional street improvements at this time for this building. There was also a revised stormwater study that was resubmitted by the applicant that has also been reviewed and accepted by Public Works. So this FDP does meet all the infrastructure requirements for that zoning district. Just some kind of site plan comments here. So Building G2 will have three driveway entrances, two on Flightline Drive, and then one connecting on 165th Street. Off-street parking spaces have been provided, as shown on that site plan for the building. Parking requirements will be reviewed at the time of the building permit application, which, you know, will identify the user of the building at that time. That's kind of generally how these warehouse buildings work. The plans also show landscaping and screening around the building on all sides of the building, which does comply with the screening requirements for the loading docks from the public view. There was also a light photometric plan that was submitted and reviewed, and that plan shows lighting levels to be within the range allowed by the regulations. The applicant is also proposing one monument sign for the building site at 165th Street entrance, and then one monument sign at the most northern entrance on Flightline Drive. And then sign permit applications are required for signs. The applicant does propose landscaping and screening, and that does meet the requirements of the regulations screening the parking lot areas and the loading docks. And those plans are consistent with the general landscape plan that was approved with that preliminary development plan. You also notice in the back of your packet, there was a attached memo from Public Works Department. Also, just to note, the building officials stated no concerns with the application and that the building shall comply with current building... and that the building, um, shall comply with current building and fire code requirements. Uh, there was also a memo from the Johnson County Waste Water District and Water District Seven. And, uh, so with that information, uh, planning staff is recommending approval of the, uh, final development plan for Building G-two, uh, subject to the stipulations that are listed on page ten, eleven, and twelve of the staff report. Also to note, um, on page twelve, so stipulation number thirteen talks about that revised, um, storm, stormwater memo. And so that, uh, as I mentioned earlier, that has been completed and, uh, re- reviewed and accepted by Johnson County Public Works, so, um, uh, we, we, we do not need that stipulation anymore because that's completed. And then, um, uh, and then that handout I was speaking of earlier, so, um, this, uh, staff is proposing a new stipulation, number seventeen, you can see that on your screen here. Um, and this is coming from airport staff, and so the FFA, um, seventy-four sixty, that's an airspace, uh, review, um, that they have to submit, um, uh, and get completed with the FAA. Um, they have done that for the permanent building. Um, but, uh, airport staff wanted to add a stipulation that just talks about, they also have to do that review for cr- uh, temporary cranes that are used for construction. And so staff's just recommending, um, if the zoning board can add that in, um, uh, would, would, we would appreciate that. And then there's also a, a proposed motion here, um, whenever you're ready for that. So with that, um, applicant is here, and I can also, um, answer any questions.
Um, uh, any questions of the staff from the board? None, okay, thank you. Uh, applicant, if you would like to make a presentation, feel free, uh, just give us your name, address.
Ryan Hackenmiller with Van Trust Real Estate, uh, four-nine-hundred Main Street in Kansas City, Missouri. I know presentation, just wanted to again echo thanks, um, the staff and Public Works and everybody at the county, um, in kind of working through this process, it's exciting to be bringing forth the fourth building out here. Um, since, uh, twenty-twenty-two, we were in front of you, so real excited about the trajectory and excited to bring this next building forward. Um, in conjunction with this, you'll remember we have, we approved a final development plan for the infrastructure. Just want to note that as part of this process, at the BOCC meeting on the seventeenth of October, we'll also be getting approval for the funding for the infrastructure portion of these improvements as well. So just maybe a point of note, but, uh, excited to, um, to get all of this going in October. So thanks for everybody's help, and if you have any questions, feel free to.
Any questions from the board?
Craig Connell, I have a question. I'm just curious what kind of tenant you're chasing to, to use this building?
We've had a lot of success in the most recently completed B-two building, which is very similar in size, it's a rear-load building. We don't have any tenants, um, today for this building, but our hope is that trajectory continues, and we can continue to keep responding to a lot of the RFPs that we've seen come across for the one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty thousand square foot tenant and/or, you know, any potential full-building users too, but no specific tenant in mind at this time.
Just follow up, Craig Connell again, so, I mean, but is it like a warehouse-type situation or light manufacturing or?
Uh, it could be a mix of both, um, we've seen, uh, distribution users, we've seen light manufacturing, um, zoning really allows for, for any, uh, any of those uses, and we're really, um, kind of marketing to all of them and trying to, with a spec building, you always try to cast as wide of a net as possible with what we're providing, so that we can satisfy any of those requests.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. It doesn't appear, but I'm going to ask, is there anybody from the public that would like to make comments? It does not appear so. All right, so and there's no further questions, so it looks like we can close the public comments. Uh, is there any additional discussion between the board or amongst the board that we need to have about this applicant? It does not look like it, okay. So I need a suggested motion or a motion?
Donna Getzmann, I move to recommend approval of application number W twenty-four dash four oh six dash FDP for the final development plan for Building G-two of the New Century Commerce Center, East Area Plan, subject to the recommended stipulations and for the reasons set forth in the staff report, and to include the new recommended stipulation number seventeen.
I have a second.
Bob Paulson, I'll second that.
If we could have a vote? Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
Terry Atwell.
Aye.
John DeGrand.
Aye.
Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Roger Spears.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Very good, and then, um, just for the, for the board?
Yes, uh, thank you, um, so this item will go to the Board of County Commissioners on October seventh, nine-thirty AM, one-eleven, South Cherry, uh, he- here in this room.
All right, perfect, thank you very much. Um, next item, other businesses, is there any other business that needs to be brought before the zoning board? Appears that there is not, um, so at, oh.
Oh, uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Sean Pennly, planning staff, uh, no other business needed, but I just wanted to give a quick heads up for, uh, next meeting, uh, for October, we do have several applications scheduled for this board. I believe there are six applications, so I just want to give a heads up on that. I believe that meeting date is October, October sixteenth. So just, uh, please let us know if anyone is not available for that meeting, so we can, uh, and we'll check, you know, in advance on quorum, but, you know, we'll get that application packet out the week ahead, but just be prepared for a number of applications. Uh, there are a couple of public hearing items and some plats, um, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you for letting us know.
Uh, real quick, Jeff, Terry Atwell, um, they won't know this, but you might, Diane. Do you remember Glenn Bonard that was on our board? Uh, he and his wife both passed. Yeah, within
Two days.
Two days of each other this past week, so.
Our condolences.
I would just say, I've worked with Glenn a lot, uh, for many, many years, um. His wife would join him too, coming here, so, yeah, I would think as county staff, we will definitely, um, extend our condolences there, and, um, appreciate it all the time that, that he gave to the county for the, um, sitting on the zoning boards and, and other committees, so I'm sorry to hear that.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Bob Paulson, I'll move, we adjourn.
Craig Connell, I second.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned.